The joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for January 28, 2014 at 3:07 PM. We have a roll call for the City Council.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. And for the Housing Authority?
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Sananian.
Here.
Have we had your report?
The agenda for the January 28, 2014, joint public meeting of the City Council and Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, January 23, 2014, on the bulletin board outside the City Hall.
And?
First item before you is Director of Community Development regarding Housing Element 2014, 2021, and at one A is Council Resolution adopting the housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Every so many years, we have to reconsider the housing element as a part of the overall general plan, and as the comments by Chair Sananian had alluded to, affordable housing is a priority. We've seen that in all of our studies and surveys coming back from the community. In fact, balanced, quality housing is a priority of the City Council as you adopted this year's budget. The articulation, the first articulation of that priority, of that policy priority from the City Council and the Housing Agency Board is, in fact, the housing element. We have a very comprehensive document, but we will give you an overview of that document, and specifically, the updates and changes to that document, as well as some good news that has been bestowed upon us from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. To give you the presentation, we'll have Laura Stotler and Jeff Hamilton come up and give you a brief overview.
Thank you. Let me just turn on the PowerPoint quickly. Mayor Weaver, members of the Council and the Housing Authority, you brought the housing element to you back in October with recommendations from the Planning Commission. After that, we received comments from the state. We've included a copy of that letter in the staff report. We addressed those comments, and we now have a revised staff or a revised housing element. What we did was we summarized the changes that we made in the staff report. So we're not going to go over the entire housing element. We just want to focus in on those portions that we have changed. Planning Commission reviewed those changes, January 15, and they do recommend approval to the City Council. We've organized the changes in terms of chapters of the housing element. First chapter, we just had to add an affirmation that our housing element is consistent with the general plan. For chapter two, that's really where the heart of our housing policies are located. They've asked us to go through all the different policies, add timelines of when we thought these actions would be taken. So what you're seeing is essentially adding dates for when we would, that we are committing to, to achieve these. So in terms of revised policy eight, we want to have changed our residential congregate living land uses by December 2014. That would be to comply with SB two, and that's a requirement that says we have to, for our residential congregate living, we can't have any different standards than we have for multifamily. So that's pretty straightforward. Program one, we had to add extremely low-income households. That is a requirement of state law. So you'll see we've amended anything that talked about low and very low income. We've also added extremely low income. So we've modified Program one B, Program one E. We've made minor changes to affordable housing sites and housing potential. We will include that as part of the South Glendale Community Plan. And one F, we had to identify the number of units that we wanted to conserve. So this would be conservatively every year. We wanted to look into bringing in 25 units into compliance. These would be units that would otherwise be red-tagged as substandard. Program two has to do with funding. We recognize changes in funding from the loss of redevelopment. So this, changing it from $2 million to $1.4 million reflects current reality for us. And again, extremely low income, we made those changes. Program two E, this is a discussion of the deadlines for when we wanted to have commercial zones and mixed-use development modifications. We've identified that timeline. And to the small-lot subdivision ordinance, we've committed to a date of June 2014 for consideration of that item. We do have a draft now. We've basically put that a bit on hold because we know that the City of Los Angeles is looking at their small-lot ordinance. We want to talk to the City of Los Angeles. When we find out what they're proposing, then we plan to move forward with ours to make sure that we're consistent. For program five D, we had to add people with developmentally disabled as a housing need. We needed a new program. That's a requirement of state law. So basically, every city in California now has one of these programs that they had to add. There is an outline of that program. It is in the staff report, word for word, what we're proposing to add into the housing element. For chapter four, again, extremely low-income language was added, and we expanded our language on preservation of assisted units to comply with our description and the policy that said we were actually going to conserve units. Again, we do that through code enforcement. Changes in five, we've added data showing that the city does have sufficient sites for emergency shelters. And as part of this item, this is the only comment that we did receive from the Planning Commission at that time, as part of this item, they asked that we identify that where some of our emergency shelters are located. We noted before that they had access to transit. Planning Commission wanted us to be specific that it was Beeline Metro and the Metrolink Station, so we clarified that language. Other changes, we did add a new appendix, Appendix E, that gives us a list of qualified entries or entities to do affordable housing, that appendix, and also affordable housing services. That appendix was provided to us by the state, so we adopted exactly what they gave us. And with that, that summarizes the changes that we're proposing to our housing element. Planning Commission, again, has recommended approval of the amendments as presented. And just this morning, we received a letter from the state Housing and Community Development Department. They've noted that if these amendments, if our housing element is adopted with the amendments as presented, this element will be in compliance with state law, and they will give us a certification letter. So with that, I would recommend approval of this document. I'm available to answer any questions.
Ms. Friedman.
Can you tell me, give me an example of residential congregate living non-medical? What does that entail?
We call?
Residential congregate living non-medical would be assisted living. So if you have, like, we have many of them around here where you have, it could also be senior housing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Go ahead. So these are changes that bring us into compliance with state regulations, in essence, correct?
Correct.
And that's pretty much the reason we're going through this action of making the changes and improving them?
Correct.
In terms of the broader purpose as to why these changes are being required by the state, is it to better administer the affordable housing programs? Is it to? What's the end game? I mean, this isn't going to really add our ability to provide more housing, right? I mean, that's not the, that's not the end goal.
No, actually, it does.
It does? Okay. Want to talk about that?
Yeah, the reason a housing element is very important, it makes the city examine its housing policies and the rules that we have in effect that affect housing policies, such as our zoning. What it does is if you have a certified housing element, it makes us eligible to apply for a lot of funding that otherwise would not be available to us. It also, if there is a challenge to a housing project, it also puts the burden of proof on those who are challenging us as long as the project we're approving is consistent with a housing element. So there's a lot of advantages for us to have one.
Many cities would effectively zone out locations for affordable housing and institutionalize somewhat of a NIMBY attitude. That affordable housing meant those people, or people other than the people that were there in the community today, without recognizing that there is a need for quality affordable housing.
Right.
So this element really is a framework for us to establish all of those policies, including the zoning, to make sure that we do have locations where affordable housing is available in the community. So like, right now, the 3,000 vouchers that you have for Section Eight are located throughout the city, but their ability to be located are really an outcropping of us having the policies within this housing element.
Okay. And in terms of the sources of state funding for affordable housing, is that, I mean, that's something we can, are we acting upon that currently, or is that something we're going to go after in the future?
Oh, certainly. The grant funding and/or tax credit deals that we do that are under construction now, the Veterans Village, the Cypress Project, the Doran Gardens, very, very complex financing, leveraged one source on top of the other, in many ways originate with our ability to demonstrate through a valid housing element that, one, we have the land and we're willing to zone that land, and that the Council is willing to put its policy weight behind making affordable housing a priority. Because in other cities, historically, you wouldn't have a desire to bring in workforce housing or affordable housing into those communities. That's not the case that we have here. Now, we, the difficulty for us very often in establishing affordable housing is cost because we're an attractive place to live, and there is density here. The cost to develop that land, a lot of times, doesn't make sense to the private sector. In fact, it just doesn't make sense to the private sector, so it has to be subsidized by the public, and oftentimes by state grant dollars.
Okay. So I appreciate that response, but it sounds like it's more in the theoretic field as opposed to practical. I mean, for individuals, for example, who showed up yesterday, a lot of them are asking, okay, fine, well, what's in the, what's in the pipeline? What's coming into the stock, housing stock, in the next year or two years that's going to alleviate our condition? And it appears that we're telling them, really, in the next couple of years, nothing.
Well, the 57 units at Doran Gardens, the 33, I think, or 44 units at Veterans Village, 18 units at Cypress, the inclusionary requirements that are in some of our building. Now, does it meet the, those are in the tens and hundreds of units, not the thousands of units. But in order to make a dent for the populations that were there at the, at the housing seminars, so that, that very low-income demographic, at the end of the day, largely can only be served by Section Eight vouchers.
Okay. So we, you know, those numbers that you just listed are significant numbers, I mean, all things considered, since Section Eight's really not adding anything to us. So is that what we're telling our, the people who are trying to get on some programs, some low-income housing program? Are we telling them, yes, in the next couple of years, we have about 100 units coming into?
We do market them through the developers as they develop the different properties. You know, we do manage, not manage, I shouldn't say, we monitor about 1,300 units out in the community that have long-term covenants.
Sure.
And we make sure that those are staying affordable.
Sure.
And as new projects are coming on, we can always do more to make sure that the word gets out. But we don't have any trouble filling those affordable units today, which tells me, at least, that, that people are hearing about it, that people are making use of it. It just doesn't seem like it meets the need. But at the end of the day, I think, again, it comes down to a matter of dollars and resources.
Yeah. Specifically referring to new, new stock coming into the market, I mean, now I'm hearing, I guess, we have about 100 or 100-plus units that will potentially become available. That's, I mean, a bit of tangible, good news that we can tell our residents. And from what I'm hearing, I mean, that'll alleviate a lot of pain.
If I could add, data that did not make it into the element that we have at our disposal shows that between 2008 and 2013, which is part of the era period that's covered by this housing element, we brought online, already built, 19 extremely low units, 165 very low-income units, 70 low-income, and 34 moderate-income units. And then what, and then, in the pipeline right now, and this was, this was drafted in June last year, we're in another four low-income units. So we have, not just in this past year, but over the last five years, we have had some affordable housing stock get built partly as a result of the policies of the prior and this new housing element.
Okay.
The other thing I would mention is that the housing element is frequently used as a tie to other funding. So it's very important in terms of funding for things like transportation. A lot of times, if you're going for a discretionary grant, a lot of times, there's a percentage of the grant award that is based on having a certified housing element. We know for in fact that we received money to improve the library, and the reason we were able to qualify for that is because we did have a certified housing element. So while it's not exactly housing policy, it's definitely an advantage to the city. Right now, there's a grant going for affordable housing units for parks. So the number of affordable housing units that we build in the city qualifies us for grant money for park use, but only if you have a certified housing element. So this, should this element be adopted and certified, then we would be eligible for those funds.
And I, I understand that. I have full appreciation for that. I think it's great. It's very important that this is obviously tied into, you're saying, parks, libraries. My only, yeah, my only question was, in terms of new units coming online, to the pipeline at least, what's, you know, how is this helping us? And you gave me an answer. I hope that we can accentuate a version of this information during the next two forums because I hate people walking away with complete hopelessness in terms of, well, is something going to happen next year, this year, next year, year after that? So, thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
I have a question. Laura, are you familiar with the term gentrification?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Gentrification is when you have an area, at least in planning terms, an area that, where people with more money move in, and those who don't have as much tend to move out. It's an upgrading of a neighborhood, essentially.
Do you see that occurring in downtown Glendale?
I would have to look at the figures, but yes, I would, just offhand, having been here since 1988, I would say, yes, I am seeing a gentrification from what I've seen then to what I see today.
To the extent, I'm sorry. And, I mean, that's not a good thing, is it? I mean, in terms of planning and goals and sustainability for a community?
Depends on the values and the vision of the City Council. If in the downtown district where there was not a whole lot of residential, now we are infusing residential.
Yeah, I was about to jump in.
Wait, 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 one at a time.
The definition of gentrification.
Wait, wait, wait.
I disagree with that definition.
Please, am I running the meeting or not? You're talking, you come in, you come in, one at a time. Are you finished with your? No, I'm not finished, but apparently I've touched a nerve. Yeah, you sure have. Both on the dais and out there. And I'm not a planner, but everything that I've read is that gentrification is not a, is not a goal to be achieved. I mean, it's, it's nothing to be happy. Because what it does is, it drives out workforce housing. It drives out blue-collar folks who have decent-paying jobs. And I see that happening in Glendale because I see the rents of all these buildings that are going up, the thousands of units, and I challenge staff to do a rent survey. Those rents are going from $2.50 a square foot on up, which are extremely high rents. And even though we may be bringing new units into the market, there is clearly a spillover effect. The units across the street on Central, going previously for $1.50 a square foot, are now going to be boosted up because, look, across the street, you've got the, the Millennium Towers and the Lexon Orange and et cetera, et cetera. So as we discuss the housing element, and as Mr. Sananian raises some of the issues with the very, very low, I think we are creating a very tough situation for those folks who are living in, by modest means, not qualifying for the assistance of the very low income or the low income. And in our, in our excitement to bring in splashy, fancy units, many of them, I think what we're creating is a gentrification where good folks, good families are being forced to move out of Glendale and be replaced with a different type of resident. And that is, that is a concern to me. And I've, you know, I, I think I haven't said it in such specific terms previously in my objections, but I'm not happy with the trend that I'm seeing. And I see a lot of folks who aren't the seniors, but are just folks with regular jobs complaining about rent increases and the high rents, and they are being forced to move out of Glendale. And that is a concern to me. And as we discuss the housing element, and as we discuss new properties coming online, the, the fear of a gentrification of our downtown is a serious concern of mine.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, and then Mr. Quintero.
I would only submit to you, sir, that there isn't a whole lot of housing in the downtown as yet and hasn't been. Further, I would submit that to the extent that the units that are coming into the downtown are priced for a demographic that is not of the affordable housing demographic, it's aiming at something higher so that while the spillover on the Central Avenue corridor may experience higher rents as a result of the accumulation of rental units, new rental units in the downtown, I would submit to you that the units on Lomita, or the units in Somerset, or the units in other districts that are not adjacent to the downtown, will actually feel the pressure of supply and demand because those folks that are paying rents that maybe are above what the unit is actually worth in the market, those folks have the ability to move up to something newer, better, as it might be defined, and allow the supply and demand, the hand of the market, to alleviate the burden on, on those rentals.
Chair Sananian? Excuse me, Mr. Quintero, next.
All right. Well, Mr. Ochoa hit on exactly what I wanted to talk about. I disagree, Ms. Laura Stotler, that gentrification is taking place because gentrification, at least the way I define it, you're moving low- or middle-income residents out of a zone and replacing them with higher-income residents, whether it's purchase or rents. There is no housing in downtown Glendale. There hasn't been. And so these are new buildings that are bringing in a new group of people. And I personally don't believe, and I've had a real estate license since 1977, I believe it was, people move in and out of the City of Glendale on a regular basis. Sometimes entire ethnic groups have moved in and eventually moved out, buying homes or just moving to other, to other location. I don't think that this, all of these buildings are going to any way impact the ins and outs of the rest of the, of the rental population. It's just been going on for many, many years. Quite the opposite. I think that the new units that are getting built are probably going to moderate some of the other rents. I think when you have, and it's going to happen over time, all these thousands of units that we keep discussing, they're going to be spaced in over time. It's not all going, they're not all going to open on the same, on the same day. But I do think that will moderate some of the rents that landlords are, are charging currently. And then finally, let me say that I see absolutely nothing wrong with bringing in a group of people that are higher-income folks that probably will not be coming in with kids, so they're not going to impact the schools. And in fact, they're going to have a lot of disposable income that's going to be spent up and down our commercial corridors.
If I may also, I would actually continue with Councilman Quintero's assertion that gentrification has not taken place in, in terms of displacing people who would lose their housing as a result of the new development. And I must add that the redevelopment of downtown and San Fernando Road corridor, where to remove blight and by new development, which we have successfully done in Glendale. In addition to that, our housing staff is keeping clear, a very tight track of the existing residential housing market outside those that are being developed, and keeping track of the rents to, because an aspect of what we do in the housing element as policies that we recommend to you is to conserve and preserve the existing market-rate housing that are still affordable. And that is the piece that is not part of the new development or anything that we deliberately do or deliberately don't do, but we're keeping track of it. We have discovered that Glendale, in the context of the region, is coming along with the rest of the region. Rents are going up all across the region. However, in Glendale, we've done, we've added units to spread out and, and offer choices of housing, whereas in some other communities, that is not happening, and we have not displaced the existing affordable market-rate units. At the time that we start noticing a change in the rents in the existing older housing stock, we will, we have, we are devising a new policy that we will, at that time, start bringing to Council for consideration. We are not at that dangerous moment yet. We're only adding housing.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor and Chair Sananian, this is a very serious issue for me, and I would request that we place this on a future agenda, the gentrification of Glendale, fact or fiction, when staff can put some numbers together for us.
Do you have a second?
There's a lot to discuss, and this, perhaps, this meeting with regard to the housing element perhaps caught us all by surprise, but.
Is there a second on that?
So gentrification in terms of the market changing in such a way where residents are being displaced?
Displacement. And I want to know where our 15,000 residents went. We had a population of 207,000. Now we're down to 192,000. Where are those people and who are they that are no longer living in Glendale?
Well, and let me also make a.
Is there a second for that?
Well, I had asked, is there a second to want this thing?
Oh, can I second it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so it'll be put on agenda.
Let me also make this comment, though. I would be, if we're going to discuss gentrification, then we need to discuss the entire city, not the downtown. Let's talk about the entire city. Because I guess what I'm hearing is that we don't want residents or property owners to upgrade their apartment buildings. We may drive out low-income renters, so let's have a discussion on the entire city.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just so I understand what we're going to schedule in the future, gentrification is a large topic. I took two courses in graduate school to just focus on gentrification. For a study session, we will focus on how, what gentrification generally means in this region and how it's in Glendale, and whether or not it has any impact on our, on the policies. We'll focus it to a place where we can actually make it applicable to Glendale, if that's possible.
That's fine with me.
Just to, Mr. Mayor, just last comment. I mean, isn't the common rule of economics that when you provide a lot of supply, then demand goes down, so therefore the prices should go down too? I mean, I.
That is one of the assumptions we do, and that is why I emphasize the fact that we're actually adding housing, we're not replacing housing.
And with the increased housing, supply and demand will kick in. If the lease and the rental rates are too high because of the supply, you will see rents and leases coming down until they can occupy the buildings because no developer wants to have an empty building.
But you'll also have to take a look at the mix of residential or rental and for-sale housing.
Yes.
Because, you know, we are, I believe, more than three-fourths of our housing stock is rental. We, is it three-fourths or is it two-thirds?
It's about 60%.
Two-thirds. You're there, but the idea being that as the, as the housing, the for-sale housing gets more and more expensive, which it has, as kind of our stock ticker, how folks value living in this and investing in this community, that the, that the rental housing, which has been a significant amount of rental housing, and the, the age of that rental housing, and the vacancy rates, the very low vacancy rates of that rental housing, all have to be taken into account because they paint one larger picture.
Ms. Friedman?
When this discussion comes back, I hope you'll also talk about gentrification, whatever you want to call it, in terms of pros and cons. Having lived in some really nasty neighborhoods in my life when I was younger, there's also an upside when neighborhoods become gentrified, when areas that are stagnant, underoccupied sometimes, blighted, do upgrade. Yes, the rents can go up, but believe me, you also have that trade-off of a safer and nicer place to live. So many communities have done things like rent control, which I do not support, having seen the downside of that as well. But the term gentrification, I think, is one that was created as a negative, but neighborhoods, rents going up, neighborhoods becoming safer, blight being reduced, is not a bad thing in and of itself. In fact, I would say it's a good thing. I'm surprised to hear that, I mean, if the downtown's gentrifying, I think there's probably some very positive aspects to that. I can tell you that our downtown core, not just the area below Colorado, but the downtown, as Mr. Quintero said, had almost no housing, if not, had very, very little housing, and now we're putting housing where there's none. Obviously, we're not displacing people from those areas. And as Mr. Sananian pointed out, supply and demand is huge when it comes to housing. And I don't see how building 2,000 or 3,000 units drives the prices up in the rest of the city. It's obviously going to drive price, stabilize prices. And we see that over and over again in communities across the country, where prices go the highest are the areas where the housing is at a premium and where the housing stock is at its lowest in areas that people want to live. So this is going to be a very large discussion. I don't exactly know where Mr. Najarian was. I don't exactly know where Mr. Nogarian wants it to go, but I think it'll be very interesting.
Mr. Quintero.
My final part, comment is that supply and demand is a pillar of the Republican Party, Mr. Weaver. I want you to.
Why are you addressing that to me? You got to say something more than I can. I want to say something eventually.
I just want to say one more thing that Ms. Stottler was being modest about and did not mention. One of the items that HCD mentioned in their letter today to us is that they're going to certify the housing element for eight years as opposed to four years, and that really is an indication of the hard work that Ms. Stottler, Ms. Duarte, and Mr. Hamilton, and, and Bakkenkamp and other staff have done on this housing element. It's so rich, it's so well-done, and it's on time, and the state is going to certify it for eight years. And that's something that I would like to congratulate staff for having accomplished.
Pretty much. As for my part, thinking of all the different buildings that are going on now, they were replacing parking lots or empty buildings, and very few residents were displaced and paid to find new housing, very few. And if you want to look at the Americana that now has high units for sale by Mr. Crusoe, you'll remember, those were all parking lots before he did that. And before the Galleria was built, how many hundreds of homes were wiped out to put the Galleria in? Perhaps we shouldn't have the Americana or the Galleria. And then find out what, how we're going to do. As a lifelong resident, I just don't believe that we're gentrification, doing, or getting there, whatever. This is a highly sought-after city to live in. You look at what you get. All the services are provided, good streets, good schools, good fire, good police. Yeah, severity is a malaria. People that can afford to get in are going to want to come in. Not everybody that wants to live in Glendale can afford to live in Glendale. That just makes sense, common sense to me. So we can have the studies try to prove or draw, driving the poor out of Glendale's rich. It's just economics, it's what dictates how we live as a community. Why do I want to live here the rest of my life? Because it's a great community. Like to other places, it'd be a lot cheaper. But no, I'll pay the price to live here. So that's the answer to your one question, Mr. Nogarian, for now, it'll be adjourned. Now, can we move on, find out if we can get a motion on 1A?
Move 1A?
For a second.
Second.
Roll call for council.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Nogarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Step on.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right. For the housing, 1B, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call for the housing.
Authority members, Friedman?
Yes.
and C.
Yes.
Nogarian?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Caro?
Hi.
Chair Sinayan?
Yes.
Okay, with that, thank you, Laura. And again, congratulations to staff, they've done a great job, as usual. Okay, 2.
Next item on the agenda is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding 2013 Homeless Continuum of Care Funding Application to HUD. 2A is authorizing, authority motion approving 2013 Homeless Continuum of Care Program Priorities, authorizing submittal, an application to HUD for supportive housing program funding under the 2013 Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance Notice of Funding Availability 2013 NOFA, and authorizing execution of all necessary documents with HUD and sub-receivable recipient service providers related to 2013 application fiscal year 2014-15 programs.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. To the extent that we try our best to provide a level of service for the least of ours, we do have this continuum of care as animated by the supportive housing program. Mr. Grand will provide for you an overview of what that program consists of when we ask your support as we file it going forward.
So with less money, what are we going to do?
Luckily, not that much less, and I'll, I'll explain what it is. Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, Chairman Sinayan, members of the Housing Authority. The gist of, of this agenda item is that it is our annual funding application to HUD for supportive housing program funds in order to continue to operate our homeless continuum of care. And the way we operate the continuum of care is that we work with nonprofit organizations, our service providers, of which you are all familiar, they include Path Ventures, the Salvation Army, Door of Hope, and our lead service provider, Essentia. And we do work with the Glendale Homeless Coalition, which is a coalition of, of all the local service providers and including churches and other support agencies. And the coalition does review and approve the priorities that we are recommending approval today, and the programs and projects that go into the consolidated funding application that we submit to HUD and that we then recommend to the city council for approval, which is what we're doing today. As you all know, the Continuum of Care strategy consists of street outreach at the lowest rung, and then it graduates to intake assessment and case management services, then to emergency housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Exhibit 1 is our funding application. This year's application consists of 11 renewal projects. These are existing projects already in operation, which are identified as Tier 1, which we will receive funding for, provided, provided that our application is a complete application we expected to. What HUD is doing this year is they are asking every community across the country to focus more and concentrate more on housing for, on permanent supportive housing for chronic homeless. So we have, in order to make our application competitive, we have converted two transitional housing projects to permanent housing. One project, we operated by Essentia, and the other by the Salvation Army. And we feel in doing that, we will remain competitive and be assured of receiving our funding. We've identified one Tier 2 project, which represents a 5% reduction, which we probably will not receive due to the automatic sequestration cut. That would be a rapid rehousing program in the amount of $122,000. Other than that, again, provided that we submit a complete application accepted by HUD, the projects you see detailed in Exhibit 1 under Tier 1 consist of our funding application for 2013. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions that council or housing authority may have.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I have a question.
Excuse me.
What does a structured program mean? Structured, structured program mean?
Structured?
Structured, yes.
That means in order to participate in the program, you have to, you have to follow your, your case plan, and you have to follow the, the advice and instructions of, of your case manager, and you have to be, be making progress towards dealing with whatever the issues are that got you into homelessness to begin with.
Oh, okay.
Those are structured programs.
Thank you.
Well, and I think you also have.
Mr. Quintero.
Have to have an ultimate goal as a result of what you're doing with the case manager.
Any more questions? Is there a motion on? I'll move. 2A? 2A.
Second.
Roll call.
Authority members, Friedman?
Yes.
and C.
Yes.
Nogarian?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
and Caro?
Hi.
Chair Sinayan?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, move to adjourn for the council?
So moved.
Second.
Brazing?
Second.
Okay, withstand adjourn on both at 3, wait. Oh, Natalie, you want to come up and say something? Come on. We got so involved in that other topic of gentrification, I got all about it.
Take public comment, we have to.
The meeting's adjourned, I mean, you're free to take comments, I guess, but we're just, we're not in session.
Yeah, I just.
That's fine.
If you want to comment as part of the record.
You care if that reflection?
I mean, you can speak, I was just telling them that.
The cameras are on.
Right.
I'm sorry, you should have yelled.
Well, it was moving so quickly, I was shocked. No, I enjoyed the gentrification discussion, we went to planning school together, so we were, I was having a trip down memory lane on that one. I just want to say that I really appreciate the work that the staff did on this, because they had to really do some gymnastics to figure out the ranking and priorities on this. But if there's a way to send this under protest, I would recommend you do that. We are facing some logistical issues in trying to move forward with the way HUD wants this implemented, and I'm really concerned. We're going to change 12 units of transitional housing to permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless families, which is fine, except that the definition of chronic homelessness for families requires that at least one adult in the household has a disability that has to be documented. And they have to document repeated homelessness or continuous homelessness for up to a year. Our experience with very high-need families is if there's a disability that the parent has, it often is mental illness, and they often don't want to admit that they have a mental illness. We're given a 45-day window to document that disability, and I can tell you, that's going to be a very high hurdle to, to reach. I think also what's missing here is that there are families with children with disabilities that really challenge the parents on an economic level and leave them very vulnerable to repeated homelessness, and they won't be eligible for this project, given the current rules. So I'm concerned about that. But we'll go forward and we'll see how it, how it works. The other hit that we're taking, though, is $100,000 loss out of our supportive services budget, and that's really a critical problem. We're going to, if, if we get the rapid rehousing money, that will be converted into shallow subsidies, but it's only for eight households. So I do think that if, if the city is interested in communicating to our members of Congress or to HUD their concerns about this, some of it is regulatory in nature, the other is that it's underfunded. The law presumed a higher level of funding than we're getting, and your staff at the city is forced to take on additional work, which is essentially an unfunded mandate, because the law is asking for a lot of planning work that has to be done, and the administrative changes are not insignificant. So I just wanted to share that with you, but we've had some very good discussions with the coalition. I'm pleased to see colleagues here from Path Ventures and Door of Hope and I don't know who else is here. But we, we know that this is all shared pain, and we're, we're, we'll just muddle through it, but if there's anything that you can do to help us advocate nationally, we'd really appreciate that.
So you were suggesting a letter of some sort, if we could accompany what we're sending?
You could do that, or just send, maybe perhaps send a letter to Congressman Schiff and just let him know we're sending in this proposal, but this is a reality, he's in a really key position on the appropriations committee, so he should hear from the city on this.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
I know it's.
It's just, we're off the record, I mean, I'd hate to have any conversation, any discussion, we're.
All right, well, let's, let's.
Oh, okay.
Let's agendize this item for next week, so we can discuss it and prepare a letter to more than Schiff.
Yeah, come back again next week, please.
In a couple of weeks, I think Councilmember Sinayan and I are both going to Washington. I'm happy to bring this up with not just Congressman Schiff, but any other representatives that we meet, I'm sure we'll meet with several, if you give us very specific topic, talking points, very specific asks, so maybe between now and then you can prepare that.
Get it on the agenda next week.
Okay.
And then get the letter written, you could hand-deliver it.
Yeah, you can do that, too.
Great.
Sorry, Natalie, but see you next week, okay? Yeah, we were adjourned. Okay, now we'll go to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council.